This is the Planning and Zoning Commission for the municipality of Anchorage for December 3rd, 2012. We are now in session. May I please have the roll call?
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Bruce Phelps. Stacey Dean.
Here.
Kerry Parks.
Here.
Dana Prue.
Here.
Ray Hickel. Peter McKehe.
Here.
James Ferguson.
Here.
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
We have the minutes of the meetings for October 1st, November 5th, and Thursday, November 8th. Is there any corrections or additions? May I have a motion? Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from Monday, October 1st, 2012, Monday, November 5th, 2012, Thursday, November 8th, 2012, as written and presented.
All right, thank you. That motion has been made by Commissioner Parks. May I have a second? And seconded by Ms. Dean, is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, those minutes are approved. May we have a special order of business disclosures? Vice Chair Parks, would you please do the disclosures?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Dean?
No.
Mr. Prue?
No.
Commissioner Robinson?
No.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner McKehe?
No.
Commissioner Horne? Sorry.
Yes, on the consent agenda item number D1B for approval case 2012-042 and S11864-2, I will not be participating in that vote as I have a financial interest in that case. I also want to disclose for the purposes of the historic preservation plan that I live in the South Edition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have none. And I assume that there is no issue with you voting on the historical plan. You don't have any reason that you wouldn't be able to look at that objectively?
No, I have built my house. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of housecleaning items that we need to get cleaned up on the plan. The Chugatz State Park access plan and make a motion to postpone case number 2012-104, Chugatz State Access Plan to December 10th, 2012, to continue deliberations.
All right, thank you very much. That's motion on the floor. May I have a second? Seconded by Dana Prue. Is there an objection? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved.
Madam Chair, the next amendment or motion that I have is a minor amendments for snow disposal site, a motion to postpone case number 2013-134 on the regular agenda for an item for minor amendment to the conditional use of a snow disposal site to December 10th, 2012, at the applicant's request.
Motion's been made and seconded by Commissioner Prue. Is there objection? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Do you have another motion, Commissioner Parks?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Goldenview Drive Draft Design Study Report, I make a motion to postpone case 2012-048, contact sensitive solution transportation project draft study report for Goldenview Drive, Rabbit Creek, and Romania Drive to December, or January 7th, 2013, to continue deliberation.
All right, thank you very much. That motion has been also seconded by Dana Prue. Seeing and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Thank you very much. Moving on now to the consent agenda item, resolutions for approval. May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the resolutions for approval in all cases listed, D1A, B, C, and D.
And that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Prue. Is there any objection to the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, that consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business and actions of the public hearing in case 2012-116, the municipality of Anchorage, element of the comprehensive plan for Government Hill. This has been postponed from November 5th and November 19th. The public hearing is closed. There will be no testimony from the public regarding this matter. What is the wish of the commission at this time? Commissioner Robinson?
Madam Chair, I've offered a number of amendments to the plan as well as a revision to the executive summary. I believe that was what staff included on our chairs after we left for break. And I'm, I guess depending on the will of the body, but I would move that we go into a committee of the whole in order to go through those. If there are questions on any of those amendments that I proposed, I'd be happy to answer them in a less formal setting.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to consider that a motion to go into the committee of the hall. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Is there any objection to going into the committee of the hall at this time? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. We are now in the committee of the hall. Commissioner Robinson, would you like to lead this discussion, please?
Well, I certainly will try. I can let you know sort of how I tackled the plan through our various work sessions. You'll recall also that myself and Commissioner Phelps sat in on a few separate meetings with staff on this plan and the Historic Preservation Commission, and we tried to pass along, you know, sort of notes as we went along with that process. But I offered in the packet, you'll see the executive summary, that really came out of those work sessions that staff proposed. I added a few amendments to those. I also went forward, went through the matrix, the issue response matrix that staff had and I put together, and I noted those on, I guess it's probably about the fourth or fifth page in, just at the top, it simply says GHNP and sort of my notes on agreeing with staff recommendations. Essentially, those, I went through and had agreement with the vast majority of them and then had some additional amendments, starting with number one, list of potential PCC amendments, I have one through C9. And then also, you'll note that staff put together, in addition to that executive summary, they put together clarification on the design guidelines table and added that, I think, into this packet. I had a comment specific to those design guidelines, a little bit of additional language that I would like to see, but with that, I think it was a big improvement on how those design guidelines would be utilized in the plan. So, you know, with that, I can either go through them one by one or just simply say, if you all have questions, I'd be happy to hear from them, or if other people have questions or would like to propose amendments, maybe now's the time.
Commissioner Robinson, you have done a tremendous amount of work, and I think at this particular point in time, I think maybe if you were available to assist us in answering some questions, that would be beneficial. Commissioner Parks, do you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. First of all, I think, I'd like to thank Tyler for all his work. I mean, it was very helpful to me. You certainly have much more experience in planning documents than I have, reading them and understanding them, so I appreciate the time and effort you put into it. I guess one of the issues that I have, and I had an opportunity to review some of these items before the meeting tonight, and I think it does answer a lot of the questions that I have. But my major concern, I guess, when I look at this document is what happens if the road does not go through? What happens to this plan in the long term? And though I believe that there's an absolute need to have this document for mitigation of damages that may be caused by the Kinnick River Bridge, I do think that if it doesn't go, that this plan probably is less important and probably has some issues. And I'd kind of like to know your feelings on that. As I look at the document, that's one of my largest concerns. After I've read your portions or your review, I feel much more comfortable with it if it goes, but what happens if it doesn't go and how would you handle that?
Yeah, if I may, I think that was probably what I struggled with the most as well. I mean, the community was asked to put together a vision for their neighborhood, and they did that. And I think some of us could understand why the community came up with a lot of the things that they asked for or created in that vision, and we asked for a little more fiscal constraint in terms of how that vision would be implemented. When I, in particular with the scenarios and that question of bridge or no bridge, or maybe no bridge means bridge in 40 years instead of, you know, the nearer term, you know, I struggled with how are we adopting a plan that really doesn't have an elected scenario as it is right now? What actually are we sort of saying? And there were some comments that the staff would go back and the community would weigh in on the scenarios and would select one and come back. And so, let me tell you how I sort of address that. One, as I said, if there's going to be a selected scenario, it would have to be a formal amendment to this plan, which would mean we would see it and it would come back to us. There was some question of how that would even, you know, happen. Just the community picks it and they pick it, and somehow it's sort of a de facto deal. I think some of my language formalizes that it actually has to be an amended part of the plan. The other thing I did is said, okay, if you're going to come back with these scenarios, we really like to see sort of two scenarios. One is this creating value scenario that they talked about in the plan that really contemplated the bridge and contemplated some rather serious impacts to the neighborhood and likely some serious solutions that have to come of it. You know, that said, without the bridge, I tend to weigh in on the option that they talked about, which was the more conservative investment approach, which might be some select changes to some roads or configurations, but mostly, you know, targeted redevelopment, just like you would any other neighborhood, not this whole scale significant change. And so, it really was that notion that, you know, we kind of would have two scenarios moving forward, and if the bridge, as the bridge moves forward, there would obviously have to be this larger conversation and larger solutions proposed, but in the absence of that, I think a more phased, measured approach would be one that I would like to see, you know, to move forward, to feel like there could still be some things that the community was working towards, but not necessarily as, you know, far-reaching as what was proposed in the plan. That's how I made sense of it. I don't know if it works, if some of the language, you know, kind of, in particular on number eight, I said add a step to the phasing that says amend the plan with a preferred scenario and a scenario without the Kinnick Arm crossing. This formal amendment through PCC in the Assembly will provide the MOA with two pass forwards in the Government Hill neighborhood. You know, I also added quite a bit of language about, you know, further analysis and just before we think that we're just going to march ahead on this plan, there's a lot more that would obviously need to happen, including an analysis evaluation on how much some of this stuff costs and who carries that out and who purchases this land to reconfigure it. And so, I think that was, I added some languages about, let's see if I can find it. Yeah, I'm sorry. So, I'm working from, there's a, that was laid on the table, I emailed it out last night, but there's an executive summary, and then back behind that document, there's a two-pager front and back where I have nine specific amendments that I was offering for the plan.
Tyler, one of the things that, when I looked through this, is that my concern is once this gets implemented and approved, assuming that we pass it on to the Assembly and the Assembly approves it and it becomes a part of a neighborhood plan and it becomes a part of the comp plan, that we have to look at. It seems like to me that there are so many obstacles in this being able to be used in lieu of the bridge being built. And one of the thoughts that I had was putting a sunset clause on the plan, that if something didn't move forward, and I don't know what the timing is, I don't propose to have the exact numbers, but let's say, let's just use two years. If two years from now, there's no funding for the bridge, the bridge hasn't moved forward, that this plan would have to be positively reinforced again through planning and zoning in the Assembly. So, it would have a sunset clause to it. I'm not against the plan, I'm really not. I think it needs to be done. I think there needs to be the possibility for mitigation, but I also want to make sure that we absolutely get a second look at this if that bridge doesn't go through at some period in time. And how does that solution work as a help to get through, along with what you've already done? And maybe it's a three-year deal. I don't know what the timeframe is particularly, but...
You know, I might ask others to weigh in on that. I'm not exactly sure how, you know, how that would, you know, would work. I think the hardest thing is you're planning with this through a lot of unknowns, right? And the municipality, I think it's incumbent upon us, however, to make sure that we act to ensure that this neighborhood is not so negatively impacted that, you know, we make mistakes that we've made in this country through previous road projects time and time again. So, I don't want to fault the plan for that because they don't have all the information in front of them either, and I think that's what you're suggesting by having a sort of timeline. That's, my similar approach was saying, well, there still are some things that the community would like to see done, but they might be, they might, the primary drivers of those things in the absence of a bridge might be, you know, might be the private sector or might be, you know, might be Jay Bear approaching and saying, hey, we really do like the idea of reconfiguring the way that the gate works and, you know, how traffic queues up there. So, you know, that was my attempt to accomplish some of what you're suggesting as well. I don't know which way's right or wrong, but I echo some of those concerns.
Commissioner Ferguson?
I have about six questions. Number one, I recognize this is the first neighborhood plan to come forward, and it's difficult. And it's difficult for you to write it, it's difficult for us to understand it, and I appreciate the effort that's gone into everybody to try to get this before us. Doing the first one, it's got to be more difficult than doing the 10th one. I do have some comments, some criticisms, and some concerns. I appreciate Tyler addressing the fact that any changes to this plan will come back before us. I think that's critical, I think that's necessary. We have a tablet called Urban Design Elements and Improvement Policies. My background is construction, my background is reading construction contracts and writing construction contracts. I want you to consider for a minute, you have two bowls in front of you. One bowl is titled "Not Mandatory." If you've got two choices and one choice is not mandatory, the other choice obviously has to be mandatory. And so, I question in the top here where you say priority means recommended, advisory means not mandatory. I could live with different definitions than you've chosen here. By using the term "not mandatory" for part of it, it implies the other ones are mandatory, and I don't know if that was the intent or not. I would like to have some dialogue on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. We are definitely open to alternate terms. Do you have any suggestions?
I didn't have a problem with priority or advisory. The "not mandatory" is what I'm responding to because that definitely implies everything else is mandatory.
Okay, so...
Commissioner Robinson, excuse me, Commissioner Robinson did offer some additional language for clarification on his first page, which I think helps with that concern. Under item number two, he adds an explanation about priority design recommendations would be consistently recommended by the Planning Department on projects that come to the CDD for review while advisory design recommendations, although highly desired...
Where are you reading from, sir?
It's that page that Commissioner Robinson was referring to earlier. It's the last two pages of what is, the top says executive summary, and it begins with
That's awfully strong language for this document, particularly when you say in this document, in the executive summary, in the executive summary on page three of the executive summary dated December 3rd, that adoption of this plan will not create design guidelines for existing or future private or public development. So, on one hand, you say you will not do guidelines, on the other hand, you are providing guidelines. A conflict of that nature brings me great concern. And also recognizing a good portion of this we have received tonight, and I'll apologize once for not reading it all, but literally, it was laid on my seat within 15 minutes ago, so I understand we may need some leading here.
No, and if I may, I think what was mostly laid on the table was information that came by me. It was a revised executive summary that has some purple underline that was my new language, as well as that two-pager that we just pointed to that were my amendments, that I'm prepared to make here tonight, either in whole through this committee and then we just adopt it all together, or deal with it one by one in a more formal scenario. So, you know, again, I apologize for not getting that out until last night, but... So, and I think, you know, hearing what, you know, I took some of staff's language there, and if you look at both the executive summary and that number two, I took some of their language, but you could very easily change the heading and the table to just say priority and advisory, to take out the "and not mandatory" at the last of 2A where it's stated there. And then you'll note that I added a further sentence under 2B that says, "Project reviews will take into consideration the uniqueness of each development when making design recommendations." I think where staff was coming from in the, what this plan does not do, is it does not change Title 21, but that does not mean that staff won't evaluate and look at these design recommendations if this plan is adopted in things like conditional use applications, rezonings, and other discretionary decisions that this body would weigh in on. And so, I think that's why it's sort of being argued both ways.
I am concerned with this document because Title 21 struggled for several months under this subject, and I'm concerned that this is being done without a great deal of input from the community and without a very thorough vetting of the language here. First priority there is wide sidewalks to include snow storage. Who's to pay for the wide sidewalks? What's this going to do to the existing community with buildup? Is this only true in greenfield work due to the bridge? It's listed as a priority, it's a nice luxury, but I don't know if it belongs. Covered walkways, the issue there is the city. The city will not allow you to build a cover, you know, an arcade or canopy over a sidewalk because you're going over public property. Ms. McConnell and I have had discussions on that. We wish we could get the city to change that language because the biggest impediment there is the city. Continuing on, on the second page on site design, divide parking lots into smaller pods, that greatly increases the land necessary for parking. I struggle to understand what is the driving force behind making parking lots smaller and spreading them out more? You're making people walk further, you're increasing snow removal, you're increasing the cost of lighting and landscaping and everything else, and I don't know if there's been any consideration to that. Link parking lots internally, that's a huge item, and has there been adequate consideration given to the cost of some of these things? Going on down, outdoor space design, under a priority is maximize solar access. Under building orientation is a priority, is orient buildings to the street. In a lot of circumstances, those two are mutually exclusive. You can't do both. Any architect you talk to, any designer understands the idea to maximize the solar access, but then to say you've also got to orient to the street, that's an impossibility in a lot of cases. On the last one, under building materials, to list is to limit, I've been told that more than once, preferred materials are concrete, I understand. Brick, there is a real economical reason why we don't use brick up here. I personally do not consider it a good material for northern climate. You talk about stucco, I don't know if you're talking about stucco being a traditional two-coat with a brown and scratched surface, or whether you're talking about drive it, or whether you're talking about ephors, or what do you really mean when you use the word "stucco"? And it's just, I've got some real concern with this thing. I really do. And on one hand, you say you're not going to do this, but on the other hand, that's exactly what you're doing, and that bothers me.
What do you have there?
You've got a new list of design principles that came out. How does that design principles table relate to the table that Jim's just been talking about?
I guess I would defer to staff on that. That was a relatively new document that came out last week. I didn't really comment on that, but I would ask staff what the intent of that...
What, I'm sorry, which document are you referring to? This, the design principles?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to point out and just wanted to remind, this document, the design principles, is just a table. It was taken directly from the plan. It's been in the plan since the very first public hearing draft, so it's not a new, brand-new document. It's gone through public review, and it reflects, it reflects the design principles that the community identified is really what it's reflecting. Our goal in listing priority versus advisory was to come up with a way to have some of these design principles that we could consistently recommend on, a lot of these we do consistently recommend on in the Planning Department, such as the wide sidewalks, we encourage snow storage areas. Those are just basic principles that we are always advising to try and help maintain throughout the city. So, we were, our goal was, again, to come up with ones that we could make consistent recommendations on and list other ones that were purely optional. So, maybe there's a way that we can go through them again and decide which ones are fit to be more optional, which ones fit to be more, the ones that we're going to recommend on. But the issue, I think, for us was just that we didn't want to say that they were all completely optional. We just wanted to be consistent about the ones that were important. That was the goal. I think Norrie wanted to speak to some other of Commissioner Ferguson's comments.
I'll try, and for the record, I'm Norrie Winter of Winter and Company. We're consultants on the project. And in design guidelines such as these, it's generally understood that there's an interaction among the variables, and one particular project, some variables will be more important than others, and you can't always meet every one of them. And Commissioner Robinson, again, has come to our assistance with a suggested amendment at which is the very last line of the last page of his addendum. So, that one, I hope, will be easier to find, but he has the sentence that would be added that would say, "In all cases, the appropriateness of specific design recommendations must be considered against a specific site or development proposal," which I think helps a little bit with that point about the interaction of building placement with solar access because the commissioner is, of course, correct. Those two can at times be contradictory, and it...
Those two can, at times, be contradictory, and it would take an evaluation of that individual project. These are provided as general guidelines and don't provide that level of specificity that some development standards or zoning codes might. I'll try to answer just a couple of the ones that I've noted here. The question about breaking parking lots into smaller lots. Oftentimes, that can be accomplished by simply rearranging the landscaping percentage that might already be required for a development proposal. It's simply a matter of how you arrange the chairs around the table, if you will. And the same thing goes for linking access to lots internally. Often, that can actually be a saving by encouraging cross-property easements. It reduces the number of curb cuts along the street and actually can be a saving. It really sort of opens the door for some cooperative planning amongst individual projects. And that was the intent that we were working toward in that respect. And with regards to materials, the language could be clarified. I think the expectation here is that any material that represents or conveys the character of stucco, including all the types that you've referenced, would be a part of the traditional palette and would be appropriate.
But you limit new materials, and that's a concern to me. By having a list like this, if there's a new material, I start with one foot in the bucket. And lists like this get dated very, very quickly. And that concerns, and I still come back to, on the executive summary, page three, that it will not create, "Design Guidelines for Existing or Future Private or Public Development." You say, "You can't have it both ways." I don't think you can have it both ways.
I think the intent was, was to imply that this was not creating an enforced design review overlay with enforced guidelines. So, that language could be clarified in that, in the summary.
Thank you. I've got a couple more points. Trying to be clear, on the December 3 packet labeled E1, page 39, item 129. Has that been picked up in your work, Tyler?
129?
129, on page 30, well, pardon me, page 41 of the packet.
I think...
Define the purpose of the plan in Title 21.
Right. I think what, what, no, I mean, there's an executive summary, and I think that language gets incorporated into the proposed executive summary. The executive summary that was laid on the table is the same one that staff sent out last week with a few purple inserts that I, that I put in, that were my recommendations. That would be easier just to see it right in the document rather than try to wordsmith it. But, but that, that executive summary would, would show up, you know, at the, at the front of the plan, hopefully clarifying purpose.
Okay. One more question. On the executive summary, and I think it's on all versions of the executive summary, page one, second paragraph, I'm looking on the December 3 version. Paragraph starts, "The purpose of this plan is to guide the development." And down there in the body of it says, "And therefore, does not affect how private property owners may use their land." I want to be clear that this, it should read, in my opinion, "private and public owners."
And, yes, thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. That was noted and was also noted in your, in your conversation with me, and I believe it is reflected in the table as a change that we're going to make in the planning document.
I could not find it.
You couldn't find it?
Now, I'm not going to say it's there.
Okay.
You know, there's been, there's been more than one piece of paper go by.
Yeah.
I just want to make it clear.
Yes.
That the intent is, it applies to both private and public owners.
Absolutely. And we do have that change planned to make in the document.
No further questions.
Thank you very much. I'm wondering how the commission might feel about the question that Commissioner Parks raised about a sunset clause. There is precedent for sunsetting clauses. I think back to the Zero Lot Line Ordinance, which had a sunset clause to it. Since there are so many variables, and since we've been asked, as a result of Kibata and the memorandum of understanding, to have this plan come forward, but there are so many variables attached to it, I'm wondering how the rest of the commission might feel about putting a sunset clause on this document. Commissioner Pruse?
Good idea.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson, and I think everyone is, yeah, well, seeing it again is different than a sunset clause, so Commissioner Robinson, I saw a hand that I'm not sure what it meant. You're all right with that?
Well, no, I, I, I guess, my only issue, I, I don't, I don't know how you sunset a long-range plan. I understand how you sunset the issue that's specific to the bridge and how the plan deals with the bridge. That said, I, there are, there are, and that was my attempt to say, okay, there's sort of two realities moving forward. One has a bridge and one doesn't. The one that doesn't, there still might be some things that the community would like to move forward and other public entities in that neighborhood would like to move forward. They may be much less aggressive. I think they would be.
Yes. I think that's true.
But, but I, I don't know, you know, to me, sunsetting, you know, a comp plan is like you go from this vision to poof, you, you go to, you know, you go to nothing. And so, I would rather see some sort of time of, I'm okay with a timeline dealing with this bridge question. I don't know if I'm ready to just say the whole plan goes away.
Commissioner Pruse?
Well, I think the sunset provision actually requires, would require that this gets, it forces folks back to the table to address a non-bridge issue. Yeah, I don't, I think 24 months is probably too short a fuse, probably more, 36 months. There needs to be, maybe in 48 months. There needs to be time for everybody to understand that, hey, there's, there's not going to be a bridge. Let's get together with, with now a revised plan that makes sense and answers a lot of the lingering questions that we seem to have here tonight. But, but the sunset provision, I've always, what I, what I've always liked about it is it forces interested parties to come together and address it in a timely fashion instead of lingering.
Okay. Any other comments about a sunset clause? And are you suggesting 36 months?
Can I make one comment? Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to, and I, I think I made this clear in an email, but maybe I should just mention it again. The Government Hill neighborhood plan, according to the programmatic agreement that dictates how this plan is supposed to go, says the plan will, will be of use to the community whether the bridge goes or not. So, that's a stipulation from the programmatic agreement that the plan has validity with or without that project. So, I don't know if that makes a difference.
I don't think so. Yeah, that would, that would be my opinion. I think, and the opinion of the rest of the...
And I, if I may, I might suggest, based on Commissioner Robinson's point, and I think that sort of the tone I was hearing here, an inverse of a sunset is to, is to require that there would be a report and an update at a date defined that would comment on which parts of the plan remain valid and which ones need to be amended. It would do the same thing, in essence, but it would signal that this is a permanent policy plan.
Right. And I think that's sort of contrary to what I sense might be the majority of the commission members. So, more comment, Commissioner Robinson?
Can I, can I just, at some point, if we're moving through, I'm going to ask, you know, this body if there's agreement with what the language that I proposed in these amendments. But if I can just point you to the Amendment 5 that I proposed in that attachment, it says, do all of you have that paper? It was the one laid on the table. It has GHNP at the top, and it starts with the language, "Agree with staff-recommended changes."
I'll share.
Where is it?
It was, it was the one that was, yeah, right before the, right before the table, I think, is where, where that document appears, in what was laid on your chair.
Number five?
Yeah.
Page 118?
Yes. Everybody got that?
Okay.
So, I just want to make sure that, that, well, if there's not agreement for this or that if there is, that it's consistent with what, what, what we're, the last discussion we just had. You see, "In the event that the Knick-Arm Crossing Project moves forward, the plan advocates for the Creating Value approach, given the nature of the KC project, this includes reconfiguration of the neighborhood center parcels and streets." Now, you know, take this as it is. What I was really going for was the second scenario, because I deal with some of that other part of the scenario in the executive summary. But however, "In the event that KC does not move forward, the conservative investment should be elected," again, that's language the plan uses, "with some more modest creating value investments as opportunities arise. This may include streetscape improvements, targeted redevelopment, and continued partnership with Jay Bear, the railroad, and the port to encourage mutually enhancing development." That was my, my attempt to say, "There still may be parts of this plan that are relevant, though much more measured, in the event that a bridge doesn't go forward." And so, I guess my question would be, is there support for, for that concept?
What I would like to suggest is, in the second paragraph there, "However, in the event that KC, KC does not move forward, or 48 months after adoption by the Assembly, whichever occurs sooner, the conservative investment should be elected."
Can someone give me a definition of conservative investment?
I was trying to use, I was trying to use language from the plan. So, it's on page 118 in the plan document itself. The plan recommends this Creating Value approach, which, you know, to me is just, is a way to say that there's some significant recommendations in the plan. Under conservative investment, there's still some things, as you can read in it, that talks about, you know, there's, it still might encourage property upgrades, streets, streetscape enhancements, improving intersections within the constraints of the existing street network. There's still things, there's still a lot of redevelopment work in this neighborhood and any other neighborhood that would help add value to Government Hill. My point was, is that if, if you don't have a bridge in front of you, you're probably not going to reconfigure all the streets in this neighborhood. That would never be an, I don't think it would be an option, unless there was some real other compelling reason to. Why would, why would, why would it be proposed? And so, you know, my, my only point was, okay, then if you don't have it, let's maybe not go that, that far down the road, but let's still, look, some of these things that are listed in conservative investment, some might not even consider them conservative. I mean, there, there's still investments in the neighborhood, and they still might be of value. So, that's why I was trying to use that.
And do these investments with potential public dollars, because this is a neighborhood plan and the first neighborhood plan, do, does this take precedence over other communities?
You know, the only thing that I can say there, Madam Chair, is that I, I added additional things, such as, in the, in the preliminary phasing, my Amendment 9 says that this would include traffic counts, projections, parking capacity studies, and potential costs associated with various design options. Basically, I tried to add language that said, you know, also, if you look at Amendment 4, which is on the Community Resources section of the plan, which is where it talks about having community gardens and a community building, I, I wanted to see the language added, "That implementation of community amenities will depend on available funding for both capital and long-term operational costs." In my opinion, and perhaps in that of the planners, it's sort of stating the obvious. But I think it adds pretty succinct clarification that this is not a mandate to do this stuff. This stuff is always going to depend on our overall objectives as a community and how that's, you know, determined through the CIP process and other, you know, other funding applications that we have in front of us.
I certainly do agree with all of those comments. My concern really is, as this is the first neighborhood plan, that if, with, and it has been generated, the genesis for it has been the proposed Knick-Arm Bridge. We wouldn't be looking at it if this was not part of the MOU. That I would hate to see, as a result of all of that, because all the things that you have identified, even under the conservative investment approach, are, are in today's dollars and economic circumstances, would be considered luxuries, really, quite frankly. And so, therefore, it does concern me that, like has been discussed before, that these conservative investments, as a result of not having Kibata, would really, I guess, perhaps not be perceived in the same reality. And that's why I think I would be supportive of a, of a sunset clause, a 36-month sunset clause, because without Kibata, it seems to me that this community will become perhaps more realistic in its expectations in terms of what it can do in order to be a viable part of the community overall. So, Commissioner Robinson, would you like to go through your amendments? Because I think that might be the first step before we move on to a, a different vote. Now, let me ask the secretary, as far as amendments are concerned, are we going to deal with the amendments one at a time or collectively, or how, we need a motion first for the entire plan, or how are we going to do this? We're still in a committee of hold, so I'd like some clarification.
Once you come out of the Committee of the Hold, you can either stand and report or you can go forward with a motion. You need to do a motion on the whole agreement and then do each amendment one at a time, all in the positive, and then...
If, if there's, if there's agreement on, you know, say, say eight of the nine amendments that we decided in the Committee of the Hold, and we agree to that in this committee, can we make, as we make a main motion, and say, "As well as Commissioner Robinson's amendments 1 through 8," and that can be a part of that motion? Can we do that and then debate the merits of the other one or not? Or do we have to actually go through each one out of the Committee of the Hold?
The Committee of the Hold is separate from the commission meeting?
I do, but, right, but if I just say, okay, we want to adopt this plan with amendments 1 through 8, is that sufficient, or do you need, on the record, debate on each of those?
If you want to adopt all those eight amendments, those are fine. I'll just need findings at the end on why you support everything. That's...
Okay.
In the end, we'll need findings on the whole thing.
Okay.
Whatever's discussed in the Committee of the Hold would not be findings and wouldn't be part of the minutes.
So, Madam Chair, it's up to you, but if we go through and there's agreement on each of these and that becomes part of the suite of the, the main motion, then, then that's already decided. We don't really need to debate the merits, you know, once we're out of the committee.
Well, you do have to have findings of fact.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do have to have findings of fact.
And one clarification, when you do come out of the Committee of the Hold, if you do a motion that has the amendments included in it, you just need to be sure that that doesn't fail because of the amendments, which is generally why we do each amendment separately. But if you do have an agreement through the Committee of the Hold, then I can't see an objection. Maybe do an amendment on whichever ones you disagree with.
Right.
Or there's disagreement on...
And if we wanted to do an amendment for a sunset clause, that would be separate. Okay? Commissioner Ferguson, you are about to speak.
Would it be wise to have a preliminary showing while we're in a Committee of the Hold on all... the Whole, on all nine amendments, and then on the sunset clause before we came out?
Sure, if that's what you'd like to do, we can do that.
I think it might be a prudent way, prudent use of our time.
All right, very good, thank you. So, let's do the sunset clause first, because that's easier. How many, can I have a showing of hands of those in favor of a sunset clause?
Did you define the term? Is it 36 months?
36 months.
Okay.
Okay.
So can I just, the whole plan would then be no longer a plan unless otherwise modified? Is that what...
Well, I think what the, what my thought process was, it would have to be positively put back into position. It wouldn't, it would set unless somebody brought it back and says, yes, we want to continue. It may be that it's only three months out from money being funded for the bridge, and it would make all the sense in the world to do it, but four years from now, we'll know a lot more than we know today.
Okay.
That was my, that was my concern. I don't want it to just go away particularly. I just want it to be, I want it to be required to be looked at at this organization and the Assembly.
All right.
36 months from when the Assembly approves it.
Yes. All right, so, one, Dana, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have unanimity on that issue. All right, very good. So Commissioner Parks, when it comes to the appropriate time, you'll make that amendment, please. All right, thank you very much. Tyler, would you now like to go through your, briefly go through your amendments for the benefit of the commissioners?
Yes, I'd like to start with number two and come back to the executive summary, because some of that just kind of flows back into the executive summary from these. So, again, working from that same page, number two is design guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, again, from what I heard from Commissioner Ferguson, I would, there's a couple ways to do this. I mean, one is you could, you could, what I was proposing is to recommend the table that staff put together, with the language here that says, you know, priority design recommendations would be consistently recommended by the planning department, da-da-da-da, and although highly desired in the community, would be optional for the project. I would, I would scratch and not mandatory, given what I just heard from Commissioner Ferguson.
Okay.
So, so the way that, I, I...
I'm sorry.
Yes, the new, the new design guideline one, which breaks them into, you know, and I think we could spend some time on this and make some changes. These don't, these aren't, you know, whatever, whatever it's needed to make it sort of work. It worked a lot better for me written like this than it did before. And I guess what I would also, so I added in my statement B, is project reviews will take into consideration the uniqueness of each development when making design recommendations. I would similarly add a C to that and say, remove recommended and not mandatory from the table itself, to be consistent throughout.
Okay.
Did I make one suggestion there?
Huh? Eh?
C was just, just in order to be consistent, to actually scratch where it says, priority equals recommended, advisory equals not mandatory, from the table itself.
Okay.
If staff could, or on the outdoor space design, UD nine, move maximize solar access with building orientation from a priority to an advisory. I'm trying to, trying to clear up the conflict that I see between UD nine and UD ten.
That would be item, we would add item number D to section, to number two, I believe, would be the appropriate way to manage that. And I think the Secretary has it. Can you repeat that, Commissioner Ferguson?
On outdoor space design policy number UD nine, move maximum solar access with building orientation from a priority down to an advisory.
All right.
Same also on UD ten. It says orient buildings to maximize solar access, move that from a priority to an advisory.
Commissioner Robinson, this is your amendment, so to speak. Are you fine?
I look at it as our amendment right now.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
All right, okay, good. Moving on to item number three.
I think, so when I say Staff Issue 139, I'm referring to the matrix in the staff packet that calls out, and it's on page 47. So this is language of, you know, how the scenarios work, and staff came up with some language and recommends inserting this language into Chapter Five that talks about the role of the scenarios. And the language that's both underlined and striked out is me taking their language and adding some differences. So the amendment is, number one, you'd have to accept staff amendment, you know, from the original table. Number two, if you wanted this, you would accept my language or my revision to that language. So you can see that the scenarios reflect the vision set forth by the community, and are proposed to help mitigate the impacts of a major infrastructure project proposed through the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
You go on to see, "Until a specific scenario is," and I write, "adopted through a formal amendment to the plan," instead of what was there previously, "the scenarios will not have a regulatory effect per se, but they can serve to give interested developers an idea of how to develop." That's when I go into this idea that I talked about previously. Two scenarios will be identified, a creating value scenario that reflects the community's vision with the KAC project moving forward, and a second, conservative moderate investment scenario that provides for a vision without the bridge, or the bridge that may not occur in the 20-year timeframe of the plan. In either case, these chosen scenarios would be formal amendments to the Government Hill Neighborhood Plan. Further steps may include overlay districts that would become the regulatory tool to guide development. That was part of their language, it just, just was tweaked.
I don't have any immediate objection to that language, and I don't see any of the other commissioners also with an objection, so let's move on. Okay, item number four.
Number four is, again, in that community resources section, page 63 of the plan document itself. You'll note in there, it's where it talks about, provide a community meeting hall, provide an outdoor use and gathering space, provide space for potential farmer's market, those things. And in that opening paragraph, or, you know, little sentence, I just say, "Implementation of community amenities will depend on available funding for both capital and long-term operational costs."
Okay. Next.
This refers to page 118 of the plan itself, and again, that's where they get into the Approach One, do nothing, Approach Two, conservative investment, Approach Three, creating value. I felt that if we were starting to add this, this sort of nuance, where we had a with bridge and without bridge, we had to sort of talk about it in that, in that part of the plan for consistency. So you'll see, again, the main part is that second sentence, "However, in the event that KAC does not move forward, the conservative investment should be elected with some more modest creating value investments as opportunities arise. This may include streetscape improvements, targeted redevelopment, and continued partnership with Jay Bear, the railroad, and the port to encourage mutually enhancing development."
And item number seven?
Uh, number, yeah, number six, I believe. So there's a, there's a section in the plan that's, I think it's Chapter, Chapter Seven, implementation strategies. Some of the, so it's on page 121 of the plan, simply that there are some implementation strategies or tools that are listed that, frankly, we've done, the planning department's done some initial analysis, that frankly, may not be tax increment financing, for example, may not work in Anchorage. And so I simply added that further analysis should occur to determine the appropriateness and feasibility of each tool. Right now, it reads that you're just going to start doing this stuff. Again, it's a common sense statement, but I think it's, that's clarity.
All right.
Implement, so now, moving on to number seven, under implementation strategies, again, just turn the page, a couple of, one page, there's lists a neighborhood project team, and I just added clarification on what that neighborhood project team was. The neighborhood project team is not intended to be part of a new formal approval process, but rather is proposed to help make recommendations to those approving agencies that are representative of all neighborhood stakeholders. This is not, is not, is not intended to be a separate, you know, you go to the community council, you also go to a neighborhood project team. However, having this team may help your project forward, because you know these are, this is a group of stakeholders that are aware of the plan and aware of where Government Hill is headed.
And it, but is that not just another step in the process?
Except I...
That a developer has to, has to go through? Because you wouldn't want to come forward as a petitioner and say, I went to the community council, but I don't know what the neighborhood project team is, and I called, and there was no telephone number, and I don't know how to reach this group, and all that sort of stuff.
No, I, I think you're, I mean, and you could have an amendment that scratches it completely. Here was, here was my point with the neighborhood project team, is if some of this stuff really does start happening, if you got a project moving forward and you got some significant changes happening, you've got the base, you've got the railroad, you've got the port, you've got kabata, you've got some major sort of agencies that I would anticipate would be members of this neighborhood project team somehow, that would have to be working together. It's not simply a group of residents. It's a group representing all of these significant ownership stakes in the neighborhood. That's how I saw it. And so that, in that context, I saw it as potentially valuable, but...
Can't Jay Bear and the port and the railroad all go to the community council? And I think we've seen them from time to time, when, when they've, you know, had an important issue, or we've seen the airport and, at public testimony, we've seen the port at public testimony, we've seen various other major entities come forward during public testimony, or appear as part of the community council?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Madam Chair, I'm not, you know, this is not my recommendation, I'm trying to clarify what's, what's there.
Okay, all right. How does the rest of the commission feel about this particular item? Ms. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm awkward with adding another step.
All right, thank you. And is that, what is the consensus?
I agree with Ms. Dean.
All right, yes, from Parks, yes. Mr. Mulkey, take that, um...
Take the NPT out.
Yeah. Delete the neighborhood project team from the document. Is there, what happens when that occurs? Mr. Robinson, you have more familiarity than anyone else.
No, I just, I think that when you, when you, I think the reason it's proposed is to help, once you have a plan, is to have some, somebody that's not, more than just the municipal planning staff, to carry a plan forward. I understand why it's there.
Yeah.
You know, so I would say that as I, you know, move, move, as we move this recommendation forward, I wouldn't carry number seven forward, but, but I would think there'd have to be a separate amendment to delete the, you know, to delete the neighborhood project team from the...
I just, I just wonder how a neighborhood project team would be funded, you know, if the community councils are funded and coordinated, yeah.
Could it be the owners of the developer?
I think so.
Do you try to get them all together?
Yeah.
You know, I would argue that it'll, it'll, it'll happen, whether it's in the plan or not, if it's deemed to be necessary.
If it's necessary, it'll happen whether it's in the plan or not. All right, okay. So we would entertain an amendment for deletion of the...
So number seven would be deleted from this, and plus, would, number seven would not be an amendment? Is that correct?
No, what I hear is number seven would be rewritten to provide for the deletion of the neighborhood project team.
Mm-hmm.
Well...
From the main document.
Right, that's a separate issue. This is, aren't we going through...
Proposed amendments.
Proposed amendments, and so when, when we go to adopt, go to, on this, it'll be one, two, three, five, miss, you know, six, seven will be gone, type of thing, and then, and then in the main document, that'd be an additional amendment? So number, or number seven would be maybe just delete, instead of what we've got written here, just delete NPT throughout the entire document?
Madam Chair, I defer to you and the Secretary on how that's best clarified. I mean, I'm happy to lend this document as our document moving forward, and that's how it, you know, works.
Right, right. I think there needs to be a separate amendment to delete the concept of a neighborhood, a neighborhood project team, and that would be a separate amendment along with the sun, in addition to the sunset clause. So there needs to be two amendments, after we come out of the Committee of the Whole, propose the adoption of the plan with the amendments that have been proposed by Commissioner Robinson, which would not include item number seven. Okay?
So number eight, again, under that, in that section, turn the page again, onto page 125, where they start to run through the steps. I just added a step, again, we've talked about the community going back and talking about a scenario, or coming up with more certainty on a scenario, and simply just formalizes, amend the plan with preferred scenario with KAC, and a scenario without the KAC. This formal amendment through PCC and the Assembly will provide the MOA with two paths forward in the Government Hill Neighborhood.
Yes, yes.
Number nine, preliminary phasing, step three, so on page 126, it simply adds that, as part of that creation of preliminary infrastructure design, in addition to including traffic counts, projections, and parking capacity studies, you're evaluating the potential costs associated with various design options.
Excellent, thank you. All right, are there any other comments before we come out of the Committee of the Whole?
I did have that executive summary, so if you turn to the executive summary that was provided on your chair, again, yep, so second, second page there, so this was right before the document we just went through, I think.
Same one in the packet.
Same one in the packet, although the one that was laid down, it had a couple of changes.
Would you like to point those changes out to us?
I would. So if you have the document, the second page of the document, there are three pages, and it's a stapled, two-page document.
Mm-hmm.
Got it? I added a number eight, under what the adoption of the plan will do. I added, "Provide design concepts and scenarios that, in the event that the KAC project moves forward, will mitigate impacts of that project. In the event that it does not move forward, will include priorities for, for the future development enhancement in the neighborhood in the context of Jay Bear, the railroad, and port, as well as the bridge in the long term." Perhaps a little bit contradictory, you could remove as well as the bridge in the long term.
Hmm? Yes, yes.
Okay with that, as long as it says as well as the, removing as well as the bridge in the long term?
Correct.
Yeah. On the third page, under how will the scenarios in the Government Hill Neighborhood Plan be used, following adoption, it is anticipated that a preferred scenario will be identified by the neighborhood. This scenario would eventually be formally elected through an amendment to the Government Hill Neighborhood Plan. By me stating that, that formal adoption means it comes before us and the Assembly. Given this preferred scenario considers changes that will require significant public and private investment, the scenario selected should include phasing options that allow advancement as funding is identified. Finally, the plan will also include a scenario in the case the KAC project does not move forward. This scenario will be more modest and will include limited parcel and street reconfigurations, though it will also represent the desired future vision of the neighborhood.
All right.
Under design, how will the design principles be used, I added, "The guidelines are categorized as priority and advisory. Priority are considered essential, while advisory are optional in nature, though desired by the community. In all cases, the appropriateness of the specific design recommendations must be considered against a specific site or development proposal."
Thank you, that's great clarification. All right, are there any other comments? Are we ready to come out? Commissioner Prues, are you ready?
I was just going to thank you, thank you for the work. There's a lot of work done here. Thank you.
Yes, we all feel that very same way. Thank you for leading the charge. This was a difficult case. Huh? After we come out of committee, absolutely. All right, thank you. Just one moment. Madam Secretary.
I just had a clarification about the December 3rd memo, where it states that the final staff recommended amendment table is in here, so are you adopting that?
With the amendments, yes, with, with the amendments as proposed by Commissioner Robinson. Huh? Yes.
So you'll adopt?
Yes, A, B, and C, yes.
Recommendations?
With the amendments proposed by Tyler Robinson, Commissioner Robinson, except for, right, item number seven, that's exactly correct. All right.
Yeah, and if I may, the reason why, if you look at that page, I don't list all of them in the recommended changes, is all, a lot of staff's recommendations didn't have an action associated with it. So, so if you just ignore that and say you take the whole table, obviously if it doesn't have an action, there's no change to the plan.
All right, okay, very good. I think we're ready to come out of the committee of the hall, and in regard to, may I have a motion to come out of the committee of the hall? Moved by Commissioner Parks and seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. We are now out, is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, we are out of the committee of the hall in regards to case number 2012-116, the Government Hill Neighborhood Plan. May I have a motion for approval, please? Commissioner Robinson?
Uh, in the case of, case number 2012-116, Government Hill Neighborhood Plan, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward our recommendation of adoption of this plan to the Anchorage Assembly with, with staff recommend, the staff recommended table of amendments to the plan, the executive summary, the KAC design principles, and the amendments proposed by myself and discussed by the commission, numbers one through six, eight, and nine.
All right, thank you very much. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Pruse?
Just clarification, so are we going to hold this vote and then have additional amendments, or are we gonna vote on this and then try to add amendments? I don't, I'm not quite sure how this works.
Uh, Madam Secretary, I, we can do it either way, it's my understanding.
Once you've made the motion, then you'll need to do amendments before you vote on the motion.
Okay.
And then you come back, once you've agreed on the amendments, you come back and you vote on the total amended motion.
All right, okay. So, do you have a motion, an amendment?
Right, there'll be more amendments, I see.
Right, so, do we have an additional amendment? Yes, all right, all right. Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, or an amendment, an a motion that states that this particular event will have a sunset clause, this plan, 2012-116, for the Government Hill Neighborhood Plan, would have a sunset, which would be 36 months from the time that the Assembly approves this plan and implements it.
All right, thank you very much. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Pruse?
Wouldn't that sunset clause be provided, the bridge does not come to fruition? If the bridge comes to fruition, what, is the plan go forward?
This plan would be set in place if that happens, that's correct.
Right, but you did not, that was not mentioned. You just, you just, it was gonna be sunsetted no matter what.
No, that's my intent. If, if the bridge is not funded or begun before 36 months from the time then approved of the Assembly, this would have a sunset clause.
All right, thank you very much. There was another amendment, and I can't remember what it was.
When you refer to project team.
Well, the amendment was, uh, well, Commissioner Robinson did not propose amendment number seven.
They had to do with the NPT.
The neighborhood, yeah, the NPT.
Yeah, but the NPT is in there now, and we want to dig it out.
You can do that by amendment.
A point of order, please. We need to deal with this amendment first.
Let's move to the, vote in there.
All right.
And if I could clarify, that was given, or not?
Correct.
Yeah, funded, funded or begun.
Funded or begun.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, planning staff, yes?
I just wanted some clarification on Commissioner Parks's amendment there. He said that it was based on whether the case he received funding or was begun to be built. Those two have very different timelines, so one could be way out there, built versus funding, which could happen maybe this legislative session.
Well, it, it's my intent that if the funding is in place, then it's, it's gonna be built. It may not have begun to be built, but, but, or whichever comes first. I mean, there may be a chance that it gets funded and begins within the 36-month timeframe.
It, in, historically speaking, it has been funded in stages, so do we need to define a funding? Funding for construction as opposed to planning, or-
Absolutely, funding for construction.
Funding for construction.
That's correct.
All right, very good. That's what I thought, that's what I thought your intent was. All right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, um, is there objection to the motion? All right, then that motion, that amendment is approved. We have a second amendment regarding, yeah, the neighborhood team, neighborhood project team?
Right.
No, at the end. All right, okay. The neighborhood project team, is there a motion for amendment regarding that? Commissioner Ferguson?
In the matter, case number 2012-116, Government Hill Neighborhood Plan, page 122 of the plan, I'd like to delete the reference to neighborhood project team in paragraph six.
All right, thank you very much. It's been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion to amend has been approved. We're now back to the main motion for approval in regards to the Government Hill Neighborhood Plan, case 2012-116. Is there any objection to the main motion? Commissioner Mulkey, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, we, probably remember when we've seen this previously, I had serious concerns over this, this plan as originally presented. It didn't strike me as a plan, it struck me more as a dream. It was, expectations did not seem grounded in reality, and I just want to thank Commissioner Robinson and the staff working with him, supporting him, that with the addition of the executive summary especially, and the amendments, and then finally, the amendments that he proposes this evening, I think it brings the plan back to a reality-based plan that actually has a chance of, of moving forward.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Rob, uh, Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. I have some findings related to this motion. I will be supporting it. As the first neighborhood plan adopted by the municipality, the plan establishes a vision for the neighborhood, adopts a land use plan map to guide future development, and makes key recommendations to implement the vision over time and as funding allows. The plan lays out scenarios and designs on how the impacts of the Knickarm Crossing can be mitigated. These scenarios show how to redefine the neighborhood center and suggest the desired state for road and parcel realignment, building placement, and the types of desired public amenities in the event that this project moves forward. The plan's a result of mitigation required of the KAC project, specifically the section 106 consultation process, which resulted in a KAC project programmatic agreement and MOU between the KAC and the municipality of Anchorage. When taken in conjunction with the historic preservation plan, Government Hill Plan establishes a framework for protecting historic and neighborhood assets within the specific plan areas. The plan is the outcome of many public meetings and workshops, and also the coming together of key agency stakeholders such as the port, railroad, and Jay Bear. Moving forward, the plan will need continued engagement with these agencies as well as the KAC and DOT.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Robinson, I think we all are very thankful and grateful for the amount of work that you have put into this plan. We thank you for your efforts. Thank you very much. Um, is there any objection to the main motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. We're gonna take a short five-minute break, and then we will come back. Thank you.
(laughing)
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 Long-range planning section of community development, and here with me tonight is also Rebecca Fogel and Ruth Todd from our consulting firm, Page and Turnbull, that helped complete the plan. We heard what you said. You've got a, as part of your packet, you have about, I believe it's about 75 pages of comments that were heard from you as well as other agencies, and our responses to these comments were, for a lot of it, that yes, we agreed that some of the language in the historic preservation plan would be best suited to a neighborhood plan, and so we agreed to delete those. Comments that the neighborhoods really wanted to have in there, we explained that a little bit, or rephrased those ideas, goals, policies, and strategies, and, and then we also revised our implementation matrix based also on what we heard. I don't know if you want me to go through every one of them, I, I don't think so, but the bottom line is, is we wanted to be able to give back to you a response that says we heard what you said, you want it to be really tightened up, and really more about historic preservation, and like I mentioned to you originally, when we went out and did our public process, sometimes the kitchen sink gets thrown in, and the public uses the opportunity to voice all of their concerns, which they did during the historic preservation planning process, and so we've tightened it up, we've provided you with a revised purpose of the plan, and then a little bit about the objectives, and then what the plan will do and not do, and, and then we gave you a summary of principal recommendations based on what we heard.
Excuse me, are there questions from staff, or to staff at this time? Well, Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, can I just ask that, in addition to the, the recommendations in the table, what is staff recommending we approve here this evening?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have that on. We, we're asking that you recommend approval of the plan to move forward to the Assembly with the indicated changes that are in the table. And then I believe, Commissioner Robinson, you also raised a couple of questions with me through emails over this weekend, and we responded back to you today, and there may be a couple of other elements or language that needs to be changed that would also be included in that table.
So just to clarify, and, one of the things I, or two of the things I'd asked, one was that whether or not the executive summary is actually included as an element, or, or is it, is it not? That, that has to be approved separately, or amended separately?
That would need to be, it could be included.
Right, so it's, it's not in the table per se, right? It's a separate addition to, to the plan?
Right, yeah.
So, so we have the plan, we have the matrix, we have an executive summary, and we have a summary of principal recommendations?
Yes.
Are there any other comments? Commissioner Ferguson?
I have a couple of questions. I apologize for not doing my own homework here, but the original plan we saw had a full-time historical preservation officer in it. Does the plan that's submitted tonight include that person?
I, what we did is we clarified the language on that. That position already exists, it's already in muni code, and so we gave you a better explanation of where that is in the code.
Where did you do that, please?
We're looking here. If you could look on page 26 of the table. The, the first item there, like I said, that we currently have an acting preservation, historic preservation officer, that's me, that position was approved with the formation of the Historic Preservation Commission in 2007, and while the Assembly did approve a full-time position, I only spend about, probably anywhere from 30 to 50% of my time in that position. I wear a lot of other hats, too.
I think it's appropriate. I, I am uncomfortable if we are dictating to the director what his staff does. If this plan says that we will provide adequate resources, I'm okay with that. I believe the language was before was for a full-time historical preservation officer, and I'm trying to find out whether that language is, is still in there, or has been removed or clarified.
Um, I think the language in the plan says a dedicated preservation officer, and at this point, we didn't change it, but we can make changes. That's why we're here tonight.
I, I, the word dedicated to me means full-time, and I, I, I'm uncomfortable with that. If we had a preservation officer, I, I'm, that's acceptable. The word dedicated, I'm not comfortable with.
Okay, would you like us to remove the word assigned or dedicated? We can do that?
I would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate receiving the answer back on how many pieces of property are we're talking about. That was very beneficial, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I am, is the demolition, is the demolition delay review language still in the document we have before us tonight?
Okay. That's on page 28 of the table, of the comment response table, and what we did is revise the make, the matrix, and, and it states that further action would be needed by the public property owners, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Assembly in order for that to move forward. So we gave, at, at this point in time, the plan would not all of a sudden create a demolition stay. That would have to come back to you in the future?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. The language you're proposing is acceptable. If it were to come back in the future, I'd want some sort of a, a limit on how long that would be, that would be my concern there. But you, you've, you've answered my question tonight, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Um, you asked for reduced fees for historical properties. Is that language still in here? My issue is when I wrote down my question, I did not reference where I wrote it from, so then I can't reference your table to find it back, so. So, then, I can't reference your table to find it back.
However, we did add an explanation to it, and that, it's on page 56 of the table, and that it would need to be thoroughly studied if and when this strategy would happen.
I have an issue. I have had to obtain permits in the past for the American Red Cross, the 11th Air Force Memorial on Emerald Field, and the Purple Heart Memorial on the Park Strip. In each case, I had to pay full permit fees. I was told, "We don't reduce the fees for nonprofits." I think it starts a bad policy. If we reduce the fees for historical properties, that has the effect of raising fees on everyone else. And so, I would ask that you reconsider that and not provide for the reduction of fees for historical properties. I understand that some people might like it, but I just think it starts a bad precedent. And right now, if we don't provide any reduced fees, I think that's a better precedent to work with.
Thank you. We'll note that and change that.
Thank you. No further questions.
Ms. Dean.
Through the chair. My question is on the plan book. If you go to page 148, and 7.6, it says, "Create neighborhood-specific design guidelines to influence future development in infrastructure projects and ensure the continued preservation of neighborhood character and historic resources." Could you go into detail for us to tell us exactly what those design guidelines will be, and how they will affect building or homeowners in those areas?
Well, first of all, in order to implement any kind of a design guideline, those would be related to a historic district should one be proposed and approved. And all of that would come before you, before we would even work on design guidelines. So, the process for nominating a historic district, first of all, you have to have the homeowners approve, which I think we talked about a little bit last time I was here. You would also have to have the State Historic Preservation Office approve it. And then, you would, you have to have the National Park Service locally support it, and then, at the federal level, support that, too. So, it's a big process. And accounting for the possibility of being able to have historic districts and then, design guidelines which would go with them, is one of the foundational elements of a historic preservation plan. And you sent me that email asking questions about what is the National Park Service standards, and what does all of that mean? The National Park Service does give guidance on what should be in a plan. And one of those things is, how are you going to nominate a historic district and make that happen? So, those guidelines, and we thoroughly understand your point of view, being someone that goes in and helps folks remodel their homes there in the South Edition area also, I mean, around town. So, it would be something that would come before you, probably not once, twice, but probably three times before that would ever go forward. Again, it's appropriate to have that language in there for a historic preservation plan. We can amend it a little bit and say, "Should they move forward?" And then, Rebecca has a comment, too.
Yes. Again, I'm Rebecca Fogel, project manager from Page and Turnbull on this project. If you turn your attention to page 34 of the packet, we actually substantially rephrased, not the policy, but all the implementation strategies, sort of combined them into one strategy to clarify that, like Christine was saying, that these guidelines would...
Which packet?
Oh, I'm sorry. Page 34 of E2.
34 of E2.
Of E2. Packet E2.
Your comment-response table that you have in your packet? Did you get your question answered, Ms. Dean?
I had one more question related to that.
Okay.
And that would be, setting up a historical district, and the whole process involved in that. Where is it in the plan? And where does it give me specifics on the voting process for becoming a historical district? Can you give me those pages?
Page 145 has the discussion about creation of the historic districts in the plan. And then, also in the table, we discussed that further on page 31, based on what we heard from you. So, the plan is not intended to give the step-by-step process of how you would nominate a district. There's actually guidance from the National Park Service for that.
And I found the guidance from the Park Service. We did include that in the table. On page 49, there's a reference to a website there. There was a question before about how you calculate districts and what's the consent process like, and that reference pretty clearly outlines that. Christine, I don't know if you, we didn't include a copy of that, I don't think.
Oh, okay.
So, it's just a web reference for the moment.
Do you think it should be part of the plan, though, so that people understand what they're taking on, should they go ahead and vote to become part of a historical plan?
We could certainly include that as an appendix to the plan, if you think that would be helpful.
For people to clearly understand, you know, that 45 percent of the people who show up for a meeting are the, have the ability to vote for an entire area, if that's how it's set up, or if it's a vote-on-a-ballot measure that comes out, and you're able to vote that way. You know, I'm very unclear on that whole process. I think it's only fair for people to really understand how it works.
Sure. I think we could certainly add that to the plan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson, and then Commissioner Ferguson again.
Thank you. Couple of questions. One, we're on the questions that I sent to you earlier, I guess, last night. Numbers five and six. So, on number five, 5.13.3, South Edition, had to do with identifying additional commercial, potentially small commercial in South Edition. I argued that that's more appropriate for a neighborhood plan. Am I getting your concurrence on that as well?
Yes. We agree with you on that.
And number six, the single-family neighborhoods in Fairview, what was your, what exactly was your response related to 7.14-FV?
Well, I guess we didn't quite understand that question. Did you mean single-family homes, single-family blocks, or, because Fairview's all one neighborhood? So, that was the confusion that we had there.
Here's, let me clarify if I can find it. It says, first of all, 7.14-FV, "Create zoning and land use policies that support primarily single-family residential uses, with mixed-use and multifamily housing allowed in limited areas of Fairview." Look at a zoning map of Fairview. It's exactly the opposite. It's primarily multifamily and commercial with limited single-family pockets. So, I don't know where we, you know, how we kind of say, you know, "Study and adjust residential zoning to support new development in..." I guess it's just that main one that I had an issue with. I mean, I went and looked real quick at a zoning map today. I didn't outline Fairview, but I generally know where Fairview is. And other than a neighborhood that's just south of the Green Belt, that I think is still considered Fairview, or down by the Green Belt, it's really mostly multifamily-zoned neighborhoods. And frankly, most of our other comprehensive plan elements suggest exactly the opposite. And that is by encouraging multifamily infill development, mixed-use, and commercial development in there. So, I'm just confused by the policy. I'm not inclined to accept it unless I'm missing something.
And I might add, I support your comments, Commissioner Robinson. And I do believe that even the small, single-family homes that are in that general location are on low-density multifamily lots. Yeah.
So, I guess, you know, as a broad policy, without the backup that you would do when you were really digging into the neighborhood, I just don't, I don't see the support or the rationale unless you can refer me to it somewhere in the plan. And I'm inclined to delete that policy in the historic preservation plan.
Okay. Well, again, this came from the Fairview residents attending several meetings, and what they felt they would like to have their neighborhood be. It's more appropriate in the Fairview neighborhood plan, so we can go ahead and remove this. And we're in agreement with that. Yeah. We're in agreement with that.
So, from my comments, the two, in addition to adding the things we talked about and the other amendments, the two that I have are deleting 5.13.3, South Edition, and 7.14, Fairview, just so that we're clear on that. And I had one other question, if I may.
Please.
We were, it was laid on the table, this supplemental comments, E2, looks to be a letter written by the railroad, and I've not had time to sort of go through it, but it looks like specific comments. I wonder if you could, you know, let me know if, what's that? So, are they already answered, and then, we just got the letter after the fact? Or is that what's going on?
Well, we actually haven't had time to respond to the railroad's comments, other than what we've put in your table, which, for the most part, we agreed with pretty much everything that they said. Back in the good old days, you know, the railroad was more open to people being able to be in that area, depending on what was going on, because they were either walking or riding their bicycle, or things like that. And many people worked down there. I mean, it was definitely a employment generator. So, a lot of the buildings that are there are really not appropriate to try and be preserved at this point in time. They've done a fabulous job of preserving and restoring the depot and the shed, which I'm sure you all are familiar with. And so, we concur with their comments. I apologize that they're coming a little bit late in the game. We met with the railroad early on, and then, due to schedule conflicts on their part, they weren't able to get some information to us until later, which we received the other day. So, we are going to go ahead and respond to them. And again, on the table, and I believe it starts on page 77, basically, our agreement with the comments that they've made.
Okay. So, I'm going to then feel that either the railroad comments have been dealt with, or if they've not been addressed, because of the lateness of the comments, they're going to have to take it up when this plan moves on to the Assembly.
Yeah. Well, what we'll do is, we'll write a letter of response to them, and tell them how we responded, how we're responding to their comments, you know, basically agreeing with what they've mentioned. So, we need to respond to that letter. And then, like I said, we've included their comments in the table and showing our agreement, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Through the chair. My question is regarding the plan on page 143. There are several paragraphs there regarding permitting in those four neighborhoods. Add a historic preservation review checkbox to planning and building permit applications. If that's added, and then, you want to go ahead and check through an inventory database, who is going to do that? And has that database been formed yet?
We're in the process right now of creating a CityView database that includes all of the historic properties identified through the historic preservation planning process. Actually, the CityView folks are going to be here the first, I believe it's the second week in January to show that to us. So, people would be able to go in and take a look and see if their property could be nominated to the register. As far as the checkbox goes, again, that's another long-term item that we would have to bring back to you to get your approval. Would you approve having that checkbox on there? It's typically one of the things that is included in a historic preservation plan, so it was included here. Right now, I review every Section 106 project that comes in, and I also review all of the cell tower projects, and I review many of the other projects that come in, just to comment on historic preservation.
I guess I'm confused on 7.2.3. If you're adding the historic preservation review checkbox, does that mean that the person pulling the building permit is asking for the city to review that? Or is it a checkbox letting us know that, no, it is not one of those properties, and it's okay to pull the permit? I'm a little confused on the phrasing.
It would be that the historic preservation officer has reviewed it and basically has no comment or has commented, and the comments would be provided.
So, this would add to the process of pulling a building permit in one of those four neighborhoods, an extra step in that process of the building review, structural, life safety, zoning, those are the various reviews in residential. And then, you get to, do you still, would that be one of those steps in that review process?
Well, like I said, it's something that I already do. So, basically, it would just be formalizing it.
So, right now, in those four neighborhoods, every building permit that's pulled in those four neighborhoods goes across your desk for review currently?
Not every single one of them, no.
Which ones go across your desk? I don't understand the process.
Well, like I said, everything that has something associated with Section 106, or cellphone towers, or if there's something identified that there's historic properties close by, something like that.
Who flags those for you?
Well, it's actually generated throughout the office. We all, we have an email process where we all get, we basically all know everything that's coming in. And so, what I do is choose whether I'm going to comment on something or not.
Okay. And then, in 7.2.5, you have demolition, delay, review. Explain that process and the time involved on that.
I believe Commissioner Ferguson raised a question about that as well. And basically, what we're suggesting here would be a process by which, you know, there's an amount of time where that permit is... an amount of time where that permit is put on hold to consider other options. And with all of these processes, 7.2.3, 2.4, 2.5, these are all things that would, you know, these processes would need to be further developed to make it clear what the process is. And so we're going to revise the matrix to make it clear that there's another step here. We know that these processes are a bit vague as defined in the plan here, and that's because there's, you know, a lot more steps that would need to happen in order to nail that down. So I think some of those questions would be answered in that next round.
So, but we're being asked to approve this plan tonight. So how can we approve the plan not knowing what the language will be?
The language in the plan is to, that you would be approving the concept of moving forward with considering them and nailing down the details of them in the future?
After asking my question, hearing Stacy's question, I may be more comfortable asking that we remove that language now, the language specifically dealing with historical demolition delay language. We remove the language now, and when you get better input, you can come back before us, which you're committed to do anyway, with the language and bring it back then. I think that's, would be preferred from my point of view, and I think that's where Stacy's headed at the same time. We'd rather see the language come back than think what's in the bag.
Are you asking for a delay in this approval?
No, I'm asking to remove it tonight. And then if they choose to bring it back at some later point, they bring it back as an amendment to the plan.
Well, we did revise part of the strategy, and you can find that on page 27. So we revised the implementation strategy, and then, and it's basically referring to just those historic resources that are currently in the database, so for the four neighborhoods. Again, it talks about once the applicable authorities are established. Again, we do have a Historic Preservation Commission, and I just wanted to recognize Michelle Ritter. She's our chair. She's in the audience with us tonight. So the Historic Preservation Commission, we're not done with historic preservation yet. They will be coming back to you with their own plan that covers the Anchorage Bowl area. And I think what we could do is address the demolition review in that plan, and just to make sure that we can move this forward tonight.
Okay. So, item 7.2.5 on page 143 is discussed on page 28 of the December 3 E2 packet. We have an agreement that the demolition delay review would be removed and brought forward at a later date.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson, did you have other questions at this time?
No.
All right.
So I have a question. As you know, I live in South Edition, and across the street from me are two very old, I'm sure they are more than 50-year-old, years-old log cabins. So I've long coveted those cabins to tear down and build something on those two lots. So here's my question, which is a very basic question, is what is the process, would I, now, without the historic preservation plan, that I would go through to tear down those two very old log cabins and build two duplexes? Versus what would be the process that I would have to go through to, if this plan were adopted? Tell me what the difference would be. My neighborhood, that I've lived in for 18 years, is a neighborhood in transition. There have been additions made to properties. There is a new duplex that's going up on the corner of G and 14th Street, that Clay Porter's building, that's just a few steps away from Fire Island Bakery. So we have newer buildings, we have new buildings, we have 50-year-old buildings. And so how is this plan? Because I think South Edition is pretty typical of the neighborhoods. What would I have to do now versus what would I have to do if this plan were adopted?
It's the same thing. You would come in and get a permit, you would buy the property, you'd come in and get the associated permits, and you could tear down the cabins. I will tell you right now, the Historic Preservation Commission is working with a property owner in downtown to save one of the cabins that's downtown on 4th Street.
I read that.
Yes. So most likely, what would happen is the commission would contact you and say, will you give us time to move these log cabins or find a home for them, if in fact, they're able to be moved, and if there is something important associated with them. So the cabin on 4th Avenue, Jack and Nellie Brown lived in that cabin. And if you're familiar with who those folks were, they came here in 1912. Jack was one of our first foresters, and then Nellie Brown was one of our local characters. And so that's why that cabin's important.
But if H Street became an historic district, if the neighbors got to, if this plan were adopted, and the neighbors got together and said, "We want H Street to be an historic district," what new processes would have to be obtained? Or what would be the new processes that one would have to go through to tear down those old buildings and build new craftsman style that would be compatible with the neighborhood, duplexes?
The same that's right now?
No difference.
No difference. Yeah.
Hmm. No design review committee?
No, because that's the next step for you is to, if there is a district, then there would be some design guidelines developed. So, but right now, there is no district.
No, I know, but if there was, because this plan allows for the neighborhood, if I understand the plan correctly, this plan allows for the neighborhood to get together and establish an historic district.
If they wish to.
If they chose, with 51% of the property owners. Is that correct?
Yes.
Because it's been designated as one of the four older neighborhoods in the, 51% of the lot owners.
But see, they could do that right now without a historic preservation plan. They could do that right now. They could establish a district and say that they want to have design standards for that district.
So, okay.
So in answer to your question, if you bought those two cabins and they were in a historic district, the folks that are in the district would, like you said, want you to build something that's contextually sensitive to the district. And so you basically wouldn't be doing anything more than what you're already doing.
Hmm. I'm not sure I agree with that. Because right now, I don't think anyone that's built in this district in the last 10 years or 15 years or 20 years, or remodeled in this district, has done anything other than just go get a building permit. So there would be new criteria.
If there was a district.
If there was a district.
Yes.
There would be new criteria.
Yes.
Commissioner Pruse, and then Commissioner Robinson.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. The delineation, if the neighborhood votes, again, if I'm correct, you said 51% of the lots have to vote to become a neighborhood historic district, not 51% of the people voting at a particular time. The neighborhood historic district versus the community council?
Yeah.
And any conflicts or any, if Commissioner Ishimura just mentioned she wanted to do a development within the historic district, so would we be seeing dual oversight or dual recommendations? Or would she have to go to the historic district and visit with them about her development plus the community council? Or how would this work?
I think the key there is that that process would be established at the time that that district is established, which is not what this plan, which is not happening just yet. And so we added a lot of language into the plan here to try to clarify that point of, you know, this is the recommendation, this is the policy, and sort of the strategy for moving forward, but there are lots of steps that still need to happen. And we really tried to, with our revisions to the plan, clarify those, you know, those items where extra steps would need to happen, or things like when such a district occurs, adding that type of language to make it clear that it is later down the road, that those types of things. Those are exactly the right questions to be asking, but that's the next step.
Do you anticipate then the historic, the neighborhood historic district boundaries would then be different, and maybe a subset, or include more than one community council?
Well, for the four neighborhoods, the State Historic Preservation Office has approved the proposed districts that are outlined in the plan. If it's outside of this area, then there would be more work that needs to be done.
So those four districts are the same districts as the community council?
The planning area, the four neighborhoods, are the community council that represents each neighborhood was involved with this. So, yeah, I think.
Could you maybe walk us, like, for example, the map on page 192 for South Edition, and it has both properties identified and potential districts identified? Could you maybe walk us through what this plan is saying related to those, you know, those, that part of that legend? And I, because I think this helps answer Commissioner Pruse's question in that that potential district is a subset of the South Edition neighborhood, but it's actually, it's shown on there, right?
Yes. So a potential historic district is not the entire South Edition neighborhood. Because in order to have a district, you have to have X number of houses that could be nominated to the National Register, as well as contributing buildings that would help make up the district. So on the map on page 192, you have the boundary of the South Edition neighborhood, and then within there, you have three proposed historic districts based on the history of South Edition. So like for the, there's District Number Two, which includes people that helped establish the Anchorage area that were actually in the, I think it was the Air Force at that time. And so that's, while the architecture makes it significant, the idea that who lived there makes it significant, too. And so then the same thing with the second one, District Number One, that's kind of in the middle there, there's several contributing homes that are in there that could make up a district, and then a few of the homes could actually be nominated to the National Register. So the dark orange are properties that are individually eligible. Now, the property owners within South Edition, nobody ever has to do anything. The plan is intended to give people tools to be able to do something if they wish to. So give them ideas on what they could do as far as having a historic district, if that's what they want, nominate their property to the National Register, and that kind of thing. In referring back to my memo that says E2 at the top, that's dated December 3, we've got two objectives here. We want to tell people about the historic nature and the historic properties that are there in the four neighborhoods, and let them know that there's things that they could do if they want to try and preserve that historic, preserve that history. And then we also wanted to be able to identify these properties and potential districts in light of impacts that may need to be mitigated by the Canick Arm crossing. So there's two things working here, and hopefully that kind of helps answer your question. It's not a broad stroke, it's, you know, the four neighborhoods are going to be a historic district or anything like that. There's a lot more work that needs to be done, and it is up to the property owners to move forward with that and agree to do it.
Okay. I was just trying to get to the, any potential conflicts between the neighborhood district, you know, historic district and the community councils, and are they on the same page?
Yes. Yeah. And you do have letter resolutions of support from South Edition and Government Hill Downtown. They haven't been meeting, and Fairview passed a resolution of support, but they weren't able to get that to us. So yes, they've all been in support of it.
All right. Thank you very much. There are no other commissioners in the queue. Does anyone else have any questions? What is the wish of the commission at this time? Yes, Commissioner. We have a question first, Tyler. All right. Dana.
Just the procedure here, we, there was a bunch of suggestions that staff just seemed to accept, that we just talked about, the various commissioners' questions. So are we incorporating that into this motion? And if so, how do you do that? Or I see Tyler that was, is going to move it. I would ask him what is, he just deleted his name.
What is his intent? Yeah. What is his intent?
Well.
Commissioner Robinson, what is your intent?
Thank you. I mean, you know, I think the way I was going to approach it is to motion the plan, the matrix, the executive summary, and the summary of principal recommendations. And then to make sure that we follow up with additional amendments, I had one on these two steps that I talked about to amend that main motion. So whether there are other ones that have already been, I didn't track all of those, so I don't know if someone else did.
Well, I know I didn't, but I liked what they were saying, so I don't know quite how to.
Perhaps if they remember what they were, they can just ensure that those get in there.
Right. All right. So you are in case, yes?
Just a point of order for clarification. If you could include in your motion all the proposed changes that staff concurred with during the discussion, I can go back to my notes, pick those out, and list them. But that would be as part of your motion unless someone had concern about it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Robinson.
Give it a try. In the case number 2012-120, Historic Preservation Plan for Anchorage's Four Original Neighborhoods, I move that we recommend approval of the historic preservation plan by the Anchorage Assembly, by, and approval of the plan in addition to the table of recommended staff changes, the executive summary, the summary of principal recommendations, as well as the amendments agreed upon by staff in our discussion previous to this motion, including the deletion of items 5.13, 35A, 7.14 FB, and 7.2.5.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Dean seconded the motion. Are there other items to be included now, amendments to this main motion? Are there other items to be included now, amendments to this main motion? Mr. Robinson, would you like to speak to your motion while other people are considering?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'll be supporting this motion for the following reasons. As a functional element of the comprehensive plan, the Historic Preservation Plan will identify and address preservation and management of historic resources in Anchorage Four Original Neighborhoods. The plan provides guidance on future mitigation impacts to historic resources and landscapes. The Historic Preservation Plan lays the foundation for the creation of historic districts and properties, provides the framework for how new processes would be created to support those. These additional districts and processes will need additional formal adoption steps, and would need significant community and property owner support to do so. The plan identifies a large number of action steps that are to be carried out by a large range of stakeholders, public and private, and as a long-term plan acknowledges that these steps are to be carried out as funding allows and over time. And finally, the staff recommended changes and the changes that we've made here this evening to the plan, I believe makes this plan more constrained to its functional nature and limits the scope to those of historic preservation.
All right. Thank you very much. Is, are there any other comments, any other amendments, any other? We have a motion and a second. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that is approved. Thank you very much.
All right. We're moving on to public hearings, case 2012-029. The petitioners, the municipality of Anchorage. The request is the element of the comprehensive plan for wetlands, for the wetlands management This is a public hearing. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. A, petitioners, including all his/her representatives, 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, five minutes. Individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. May we have the staff presentation, which would be different than the petitioners or the same? This always confuses me.
Pretty much the same, ma'am.
Pretty much the same. All right. Very good. May we have the staff presentation?
Certainly. I, Karen Keesecker with the Municipal Planning Department, Long Range Planning. I just wanted to let you know, since the November 5th work session, we met with several commission members at the director's lunch on November 8th, and in a November 13th memo to you all, provided commission members with additional information on questions that were raised during that work session. Included in your staff memo for today, December 3rd, item G1, attachment four is included to answer that last outstanding question from the work session, which related to the number of parcels that are within mapped wetlands. Again, that's attachment four. Also, we met with the mayor on November 21st to brief him on the plan and our progress to this point. Information on the public participation process is also included in that December 3rd staff memo that is on page four. All property owners whose land contained mapped wetlands were mailed a postcard on May in 2012 with online links to plan and the phone contacts for further information. Those property owners who contacted our department are documented in a table form in attachment three. And several comments received to date are included as attachment two, including the letter and information from a gentleman in Ver Valley, Mr. Hamersky, pertaining to his property. In addition, there was a packet laid on your chair tonight, and updated comments from Mr. Hamersky dated November 30th. We have corresponded and met with him since June, attempting to answer his questions. Tonight, you are being asked to consider and adopt the March 2012 public hearing draft of the Anchorage Wetlands Management Plan, including items 1 through 6 of the department's recommendations from today's staff memo, again, dated December 3rd, and beginning on page four. Please note that under item number one of the department recommendations, in response to commission concerns, we can delete reference to undesignated potential wetlands that were proposed in the draft plan to be classified as D or P. These sites can instead be shown on plan maps with a crosshatching instead of full-color polygons as the designated wetlands are depicted. And the crosshatched polygons can be labeled as potential wetlands requiring further investigation. Those sites could later be included in the next generation of wetland maps, but only after a wetland delineation and assessment can be conducted to determine the appropriate designation, whether A, B, or C. We feel this would help to eliminate some of the confusion that the D and P classifications had generated. With that, I do urge you to adopt this wetlands management plan. Thank you.
Are there questions? Commissioner Ferguson, and then Ms. Dean?
There seems to be a stronger emphasis to expand the wetlands than look at possible mismapping that will reduce the wetlands. It seems to be that the city has taken the position that they are, have the responsibility to expand the wetlands, but if there is an allegation of mismapping, that then falls on the property owner's shoulders. I'm concerned with that perception. I think there should be equal effort put out to expand the mapping, but where there are legitimate issues on mismapping, I think we should put the same emphasis on researching those. When I read the correspondence, it seems to me that the answer is, that's your obligation to address the mismapping. Can you comment on that, please?
Certainly, it is in every property owner's best interest to pursue investigating whether or not they have wetlands on their property. Their best option is to inquire with the Corps of Engineers and ask for a wetland delineation. Obviously, they can come to our office and ask for the same of us, our staff here, to do that, and we are certainly willing to do that as well. We can only do so much, we only have a certain number of staff, so, but we are, to the best of our ability, able to map and delineate wetlands out in the field.
Have you investigated any allegations of mismapping and made any changes due to any of those allegations in the past?
Yes, we have, actually.
How many?
I wouldn't be able to quantify that. I know as a result of the cards that we sent out to wetland property owners, when the Wetlands Draft Plan came out, there were several inquiries that were prompted then, and we were able to clarify wetlands, present or not, on those properties. It's a question that comes up from time to time, and we address them as they're presented.
Commissioner Ferguson, I can testify, so to speak, that I have had that issue, and it has been satisfactorily resolved when there has been the appearance of wetlands previously, but we were able to survey it, and with the help of the Corps of Engineers and the municipality, we were able to change the delineation. So, it does occur. Having said that, I would say it is a time-consuming and expensive process.
My effort is, you have resources available to you that a lot of people don't have, you have knowledge available to you. And we can go out there and we can say it's wetlands, and it suddenly becomes a wetland, but if the landowner says no, then the landowner has to go out, retain the surveyor, retain the, or contact the Corps and go through the whole process, and-
That is, that is correct. It has to be initiated by the property owner. That is correct.
Whereas if the city's making a determination, it seems to me we should be able to come to the city and have them take it, but I'm concerned with that.
I think the, the process is, is that you, you could do that, but that the resources are limited, and so most private developers will hire their, their own consultant and then do the interface with the Corps and the municipality, be the driving force, to get that delineation removed.
That's because there's a conscious decision made that we're going to put a higher emphasis on mapping new wetlands as opposed to, and that's my issue, but thank you.
I, I don't, I don't, I just want to clarify something. I don't disagree with your premise, and it is a cumbersome process, but there, I can testify, there have been examples where the private developer has been able to prove that a wetlands doesn't exist. Commissioner Prus?
Yeah. In our work session, I think one of the questions were asked was, was with the, almost doubling the size of the total wetland acreage within the municipality, what percentage of it was or what properties were private versus public? Did, and I don't, you know, I guess you may have sent it to us, I'm not sure, I can't remember it, I don't see it. Was that explored?
Yes, sir. It's in your packet in attachment four. There's a table on page 89.
89?
Correct. Yeah. It's in, it's in this, this one right here.
If I may, well, on page 89, so you're saying that on private lands since 1996, between the 1996 version and today's version, private property, it's 436 additional acres? That's all that's affecting private property?
Correct. Okay.
Do you have a-
G1?
I have G1.
Yeah, page 89, G1, that table? That goes a long way to solving my questions.
Why G1 is different?
That's helpful.
Yeah, I never got, I never got regular G1.
Do you have a-
Extra copy?
Yeah. Do you have a feel for those 436 acres? I mean, is that concentrated in a handful of properties? Is that spread out affecting, because the number of parcels went way down. So, do you have any feel for that, that impact on private property?
Just offhand, no, I don't have the map with me to reference that, but there were, you had, do have to consider that there were parcels, larger tracts, that had since been, 96, since, have been subdivided, and therefore created a large number of parcels in addition. So, it's-
Yeah, I think we said at that, at that work session, that working lunch, that if most of the land is state and federal, then it really is not, pardon my land, not that big a deal. And it, that seems to be the case, but still 436 acres is, is a little bit of land, and I'd kind of like them to have an understanding. Is that, that's not something we can get a hold of readily?
We can certainly let you know what that entails, where approximately those parcels are.
So, the, so looking at this, the parcels went down, but the acreages went up? Is that-
I think just the opposite.
Total number of parcels?
It's just another way to look at the acreage involved.
Well, so 1996, 5,516 parcels were mapped, and then 2012, it says a total of 2,442. Am I reading that wrong?
For parcels, right.
So, the parcels went down?
Number of parcels, correct.
Okay, that was my question. Parcels went down, but the acreage went up?
Overall acreage from the 96 plan to the 2012, yes.
I don't understand that.
I think it helps-
That doesn't make sense. It's counterintuitive.
Yeah. I, I understand that, and it probably helps to look at a map to see the difference between 96 to 2012. That is something that we provided in the November 13th memo, was a link to our FTP site to show you a map which basically has both the 1996 wetlands coverage in addition to the 2012 coverage, and that kind, that map basically shows the differential between what was mapped then and what is being mapped for this plan now.
Okay, so, the acre, up to 20,136 acres, how much is private?
I'm sorry, I don't believe I have that with me, but I can certainly answer that at a later moment.
I think that's one of the important questions of the evening regarding this, which is, what is the impact that this plan has on private property? Commissioner Parks?
I guess I'm really struggling with these numbers, and I'm sorry if I'm a little slow, but, but I'm looking at this on page 89 of the package, and it says that the private number of wetland parcels in 1996 was 4,648, and today it's only 1,775, but yet we've increased it by 436 acres. Tell me how that can happen. I guess I just don't understand the numbers. You have 2,000 less parcels roughly, but your acreage went up by 436 acres.
It's a different way to look at it. Parcels versus acreage, number of parcels. Again, oftentimes parcels were subdivided, and so larger tracts of land became many parcels, but in this case, I honestly cannot quantify it very easily for you. Again, it's helpful to look at the map to see those differences, to see where the additional wetland acreage was mapped since 96, again on page 89.
But if you, yeah, if you subdivided, you'd get more, not less.
But isn't this showing two different things? I mean, this-
It is.
Wetlands acreage that has been mapped since 1996.
Correct. That's, that's the second table on, on page 89. So, that's the differential in acreage from 96 to today.
Mapped by whom?
Mapped by the municipality.
I still, I-
As a result of jurisdictional determinations by the Corps, updated information.
Well, that still doesn't tell us, obviously, what's private, how many acres are private. It just says that you've mapped 436 acres since 1996.
And I-
Of, of how many acre, well, you've actually mapped 2,425 acres since 1996 of 20,136, is that correct?
I think something that you need to consider as well is that a lot of those Ds and Ps, that classification that we had roped into all of those numbers previously- that classification that we had roped into all of those numbers previously, those are not included in this table.
So there's been a change, as I understand it, that you are recommending the elimination of D and P, but you're still hatching it in a different way. So my question is, is you may have said that you're deleting D and P for the purposes of reducing the amount of acreage that you're contemplating or are classifying as wetlands, but on the map, you're still saying, instead of showing sites requiring further assessments as D or P classifications, they can be shown on the plan maps as cross-hatched lined polygons rather than solid colors as the A, B, and C designated sites are depicted. The sites may be labeled as potential wetlands requiring further investigation, which in my opinion means exactly the same thing, in terms of what the process is that you are going to have to go through to get these hatched polygons off your map for, so that you can go ahead and develop. So I, I don't see any difference. You can say it's, the P and the D are gone, but in reality, you still have identified them that weren't there previously, which requires the private developer to go to great lengths to get them removed. And I, I think the process will not be any different if it has a D or a P on it. Now, today I went to look on the website, and I'm not very good on the website, so is this wetlands project planned, is it on the website?
Yes, ma'am.
It is on the website?
Correct.
I just couldn't find it. Okay. I guess what I want to ask you, and I don't see anyone else in the queue, so I'm going to take a couple of minutes here. When you were doing these wetland delineations for D and P or any of the others, what time of year did you do them, and what was the process by which you went through to do them?
Generally during the summer months, because our focus was primarily on the acreage hillside. We had gained information that a number of different hydroxic soil types were actually lending themselves to prove to be wetlands on the ground, and so in a joint effort with the Corps and EPA, we decided to investigate some of those areas so that we could try to be more proactive in our approach and try to alert folks when there were, there was a potential for wetlands. Part of that effort was to appease the fact that we had many violations occurring over time, and it was just a, an effort to try to figure out where these wetlands were, were coming about, and so we looked at hydroxic soils primarily. We went out systematically and investigated as best we could. Again, when we had property owner permission, we entered their property, otherwise we basically could only do site investigations from the roadways, and we established, you know, based on the Corps of Engineers protocol and procedures to determine wetlands, then were able to map many of those areas as indeed wetland.
So, did you do a physical survey? Did you use GPS? Did you use aerial photography? It is difficult for me, I was trying to calculate based upon the amount of acreage that you're putting, you're adding to in the various classifications, and understanding that there is a limited time during the year under which you could actually investigate wetlands. I found it to be physically impossible to, during that short summer months, to physically go out and look at all of the acreage that you want to add to this wetlands plan. I just, even if you did it for two years, it just physically did not seem possible that there, even given the exorbitant amount of sunlight that we have during the summer months, it just didn't seem possible for you to physically inspect all of these wetlands, which leads me to believe that a lot of it was done through aerial photography, which is very much in error, based upon, based upon my development experience. So I find it, I find it very difficult for the amount of time spent to put this classification on these properties in relationship to what the property owner is going to have to spend in order to actually determine whether or not they have wetlands or they don't. It's very easy to put a hatch mark on a map and say, this is wetlands. It is extraordinarily difficult to get rid of it. Commissioner Proust.
Well, I, I'll just, I'll just do a little calculation. Of the 8,875 acres that were added between 1996 and 2012, 27% looks like it's been mapped. So what is, what is that? That's 10, 14, in 16 years. So my question is, the other 73% was delineated by, I assume, aerial or someone else's map or something, and I'd like, you know, what, how that was done, and, and out of, out of these 2,400 acreage mapped, this 2,425 acres, how many acres, what represents how many years of mapping? How many do you do a year? I guess that's my question.
That's, that's difficult to quantify on a yearly basis. We basically take in information as the Corps does, maybe these jurisdictional determinations, and if mapping has been provided with those, we will adjust our maps accordingly because those are known wetland boundaries.
What, what is your definition of map, then? What does that mean? How, how does it get mapped? What's, someone provides you a map? Do you physically go out and put the points into something? Do you hear about something from another, from another agency, look at aerials? What, what is the definition of map that I guess, to me, map means you physically look at it, you, you set the point, you survey it, or your GPS, you something, somehow, to me, that is mapped unless it's aerial mapping, which, maybe I should say that, but what, what is your definition of that?
It's a combination of all of those techniques. We started off with 1982 wetlands plan, and then built from there, and it's, it's basically aerial photography, topography comes into play, hydroxic soil information, and again, JDs and physical assessments on the ground.
So when you see an additional acreage, does that, is there a red flag goes up or some verification that you're adding to the inventory to, to, I guess, you know, verify on the conservative side to make sure that what you're adding, especially on the private side, the ramifications to that, or, what is, what is the policy or procedure for that? If there is any.
Well, the maps are updated as we gain the information, however, we can only include them in the plan whenever that plan is revised.
Just trying to reconcile page 89 in our package tonight in the G1 with the, the plan. In the plan on page 14, you have Table 2 and Table 3. Table 2 would be the acreage in 96 being a little over 11,000. Table 3 being the acreage in 2012, just adding up A, B, and C, I come up with over 15, so the delta's going to be at least 3,000 or more, and yet the table on, in tonight's package on 89 gives us 2 and 1/2. So I'm missing about 500 something acres. Am I, am I math that bad?
I'm sorry, you're asking about page?
In your, on the, tonight's packet on page 89, you said we've added 2,425 acres since 1996, and that's just Class A, B, and C, but if I add up Class, do the difference between A, B, and C on page 14 of the actual plan, that's easily over 3,000. I know I'm not good at math in public, but.
The, the table on page 89 is just that differential between 1996 to 2012.
Right, so on page 14 in your plan, you have a table on the acreage in 1996, correct? That adds up about 11,292 acres?
Correct.
Correct. Now I'll go down to the table below that, Table 3, add up column A, B, and C. I don't get 2,425 when I add those up, and then subtract.
Okay, I understand the, what you're seeing there.
So we're, we're missing 500, 600 acres? I'll take them. Don't you want to help me to vote?
No, 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 I won't. That's something that we'll have to clarify with our GIS personnel who created, helped to create the data.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, 500, 600 acres is significant. I'd like to know where they are.
Okay. Commissioner Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that, you know, I struggle with the numbers because they don't match, and, and I know sometimes that these things are calculated differently off of different charts and, and, oh, tables and, and all those kind of things. I guess what it gets right down to, to me, when I look at this plan, and I've spent significant time looking at it and trying to figure out where the numbers come from, and I just, I quit because everything I look at confuses me. But, but there's really two things that I want to know. One is, how many acres are being added to the existing wetlands plan versus what it is today? How many acres? And then of those acres that are being added, how much of those are owned by private individuals, not state, federal, and, and government, or the land bank? People who are going to actually have to make a decision to do it. That's a fairly simple one, and, and if it came to us and it was 300 acres and it was 80 part, or 80, 80 different clients, I, I would like to have that number. It would make a huge difference in the way I look at this program. But when I look at it and I see thousands of more acres being added, and I don't know where they're at, being added from, I don't know how you got it, and I don't know who, whose land it is, makes it very difficult for me to say, I agree with the numbers and I want to put this through the Assembly. And I, I think, I thought we made that fairly clear in our last meeting. We made the statement in a couple of different ways, and if, and if I can't make it any clearer than that, I, I don't know what I can do. I'd like to have some definitive numbers, that I don't have to go in and interpret charts and, and run numbers against. Thank you.
Commissioner Mulkey.
Yeah, I, I think along those same lines. So on, on page 89 in the packet, yeah, those numbers are so startlingly different that we need a little more explanation on how we got, you know, less than almost half the number of parcels, decrease the number of parcels by almost 50%, and yet the acreage went up. So that, that needs a little more explanation. And then on the acreage, the bottom table, the wetland acreage mapped since 1996, if, I like that addition, that line there, that's since 1996, but if we could also have the total, so how many acres total now are in federal hands, state hands, municipal hands, private hands? And then I, I really think it would also help to know how much, there's a lot of movement between A, B, and C, and they are significantly different, so if a lot of private property went from C to A, that's, that's significant. If, if it went from A to C, I think, as Terry just said, you know, if we're only talking, if, if, if we could believe these numbers and have faith in these numbers, that really we're only talking an additional 400 something acres of private property, and it's only a handful of people, and it's C type, it's Class C, I get a lot more comfortable with where we're at. So we just need to expand these tables, give us the A to C, A, B, C migration, total acreage.
Yeah.
And then if it is indeed only about 400 something acres, I'd like to know about how many landowners is that? Is that one private landowner who's got, who just got the short end of the stick here? Or if that's 400 different people, if you could help expand that. I, I think you've got the idea here that that's really what we're looking at. What is the impact on a private landowner out there?
Commissioner Proust.
Yeah, I, I'd like to expand a little bit about, earlier this year, or maybe it's last fall, I can't remember when, there, there was a proposal put in front of us with two options for a road expansion up Rabbit Creek, and one of the reasons option, one option was, was not considered because of designated Class A wetlands. Upon further investigation, when physically went up and looked at, there was no wetlands at all, but yet thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours of people's time, consternation with property owners, our time here, this planning staff, all had to deal with that. Ultimately, it was decided to continue with Plan A, but, but what happened to, with, with me, the credibility of the designation became in question because of that. And I think that, for me, has prompted me to ask these questions because especially, especially when, when we're restricted with the property that we have in, in the bowl now, and, and what we, and what we can do with it and for future development, I think it's very serious we take it, and I, I just want to have a comfort level that when we say this wetlands, it really is, or how do we do it? What's the policy procedure and, and what, what, I guess, what, what do you do in order to make sure that, that that is actually wetlands in, in, in the general speaks?
Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson.
Madam Chair, I'd like to suggest that we open a public hearing so the multitude could speak.
All right.
And have them all move forward, take a number, please.
All right. I, I think that's a, a good suggestion. So the public hearing is now open. I've identified for those that wish to speak what the rules and procedures are for Case This is the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry. Nope. This is, turn my page, this is the element of the comprehensive plan in 2012-029 for wetlands management. If you wish to speak, would you please come forward at this time? Thank you for your patience. Would you please clearly state then your name for the record?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Kathy Gleason. I'm president of Turnigan Community Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on the Anchorage Wetlands Management Plan Update Draft. Firstly, I would like to express specific thanks to planning staff members Karen Kiesiker and Ed Tobish. They met with TCC board members earlier in the summer to discuss items of interest to the council in this plan, and they also worked with us on our amendment, on amendment language to the draft plan. And on behalf of the TCC Board, I submitted comments to the Planning Department on August 31, which are included in your packets. These comments were formally approved by the council as a whole at our October 4 meeting. Turnigan is fortunate to have some important wetland areas within our council boundaries, including the southern half of West Chester Lagoon, Fish Creek Estuary, and Postmark Bog. Of particular interest to the Turnigan community is the remaining 286 acres of Turnigan bog, which the wetlands plan update continues to identify as one of the highest value wetlands areas in the Anchorage Bowl. Most of it's classified as A. TCC feels that our input to the draft plan reinforces Turnigan's desire to retain this valuable wetland asset to the greatest extent possible despite airport ownership of the bog. Including a reference in the Turnigan Bog Management Strategies in Table 4.1 of Assembly Ordinance 2000 verse, dash, 151 S dash 2, which recognizes Turnigan bog as an important buffer between developed airport areas and the Turnigan neighborhood, is an essential amendment update to the draft plan. The ordinance calls for a joint Assembly-approved municipal airport master plan for portions of Turnigan bog before any future development may occur. I would be happy to provide more detailed information on this ordinance if you so desire. I would be happy to provide more detailed information on this ordinance if you so desire. Turnigan Community Council thanks the planning staff for supporting this ordinance reference and link to the actual ordinance, as well as most of our other proposed amendments be included in the wetlands plan as outlined in Attachment 6 of your packet. And I encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt the draft plan per staff's recommendations and the Director Weaver's memorandum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. All right. Would the next person please come forward?
Good evening. My name's Nicole Hayes. I work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I'm the Field Office Supervisor here in Anchorage. I want to thank Thede and Karen for all the work that they've done on this draft plan. We work in concert with them on wetland delineations, obviously, and this plan has been really critical to the Corps regulatory program. Some things that I don't think it's really emphasized, I know there's concern about designating more properties as wetlands, but to us, it's a huge benefit to developers, especially mom and pops, who don't have an idea if they have wetlands on their property or not, to use this plan to help guide them and let them know that they may need a permit from the Corps. Without a permit, then they could be in violation or have some horrible enforcement action that they don't want to deal with, deal with. So, this allows them an opportunity to look at this plan and see where they may or may not have wetlands, and encourage development of those areas at our lower value. Something else that wasn't really touched on was, this plan works in concert with a general permit that the Corps has for C-designated wetlands, not for all C-designated, but for a huge portion of the C-designated wetlands in the Anchorage Bowl, or actually in the municipality of Anchorage. We have an Anchorage, we have a general permit that the muni administers with the Corps, and it allows property developers an easy way to get a permit from the Corps because our process can be very cumbersome. So, it's this, this permit that they can get and do residential or commercial development. There's a road GP, and it's for the lower value wetlands that have been designated as C. So, it's a huge benefit to have in the Anchorage Wetland Management Plan. We have worked in concert with them and designated a lot of these sites. These, these wetland, this plan isn't updated except for every 10 years, and it's been more than 10 years since it was last updated. We've had numerous delineations done. We've had, the Corps does JDs all the time, and it, and it should be noted that only the Corps can issue and approve JD. The muni, of course, this is an awesome plan and document, and it's important for developers in the muni, but ultimately, if there's a question whether or not there's a wetland on a property, they have to come to the Corps and get an approved decision from the Corps. So, without this tool in place, there's nothing really to get, guide developers. You know, the Corps does outreach and we, we communicate with the public, but this, because the first stop that they go to is the muni for building permits and whatever other permits that they need, this really lets them know when they need a permit from the Corps, which is needed regardless if there's a wetlands management plan in place or not. So, I would encourage you guys to adopt this draft plan. We think it's a great tool. We really appreciate the work that's gone into it, and we rely heavily on it.
Commissioner Ferguson, I think there's a question.
Yes, you used the term JD.
Mm-hmm.
Would you please define that?
I'm sorry, a jurisdictional determination, and it's when an applicant comes to us, and oftentimes, they'll ask the muni as a first stop if there's wetlands on their property, and they, they determine whether or not there's any jurisdictional wetlands that the Corps would regulate and require permit for.
What would happen with the relationship between the Corps and the city if this were delayed for another year?
I don't think anything would happen as long as the current wetlands management plan were still in place. I mean, there's still a tool that's in place for applicants to use and, you know, kind of guide them towards what development. The updated plan is, has, is more accurate, so it's a better plan and tool for developers.
I'm talking about the updated plan. I would not attempt to go back and unring the bell on the other plans. I mean, they've been adopted and they're fine.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thank you. Is anyone else here who wishes to testify? Anyone else at all? So, Commissioner Parks. Was that you?
Well, I don't know, do you, I don't think we have to close the public hearing. We could leave the public hearing open and still take additional testimony. That's what I think we still need to do.
Yeah. Commissioner Parks.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that on case 2012029, which is the wetlands comprehensive plan management, that we keep the public hearing open so that we can hear other public testimony at this later date, contingent upon us having a work session with the Assembly on the 14th of December, which is already scheduled by the Chair of the Assembly, had asked that we have a joint work session.
And just to clarify that, we would have no repeat testimony. So, do we have a second to that motion? Seconded by Ms. Dean. Is there any objection to the motion? There is a work session on December 14th.
Is that planned out?
I believe that is on the calendar.
It's a Friday, I think.
It's a Friday.
And I believe it's at 11:30, but I can bring it in.
There, it's not on the calendar of the packet. It is on the muni website. It was just, it was just announced two days ago. December 14th, which is a week from Friday, at 11:30. It is an assembly work session. We may be asked questions or comments, but it is an assembly work session. We can only speak if called upon, but hopefully, there will be additional information. I'm sorry? I believe it'll be downtown at the City Hall. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. We have no appearance requests, but I do believe we have some information about the current status of Title 21. Commissioner Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I talked to Ernie Hall, the, from the Assembly, the Assembly Chair, this morning, and asked the status of that, and I was told that the introduction of Title 21 will be on the 18th, which is the 18th of December, and that they had hoped to have public hearing on it on the first works, first meeting in, in January, and that they don't really know how much public hearing they're going to have, and how many meetings they'll have to have, but he's willing to have a special meeting if need be. The work is being continued on that with Ms., with Assemblyman Oceander, and she's working with Sally on some of the wording, or the attorney that worked with us, and, and she hopes to have that completed prior to the 18th.
All right. Thank you very much for, for that update. It looks like 2013 is the year we're going to have a new Title 21. Hurrah. Thank you all very much. I would like to point out to you that we are, we have two positions open. Commissioner Hickel has given his resignation, and Commissioner Phelps is termed out, so there are two positions that are open. And so, just, if you have any suggestions or ideas for new commissioners that want to spend Monday nights with us, please, please let the mayor's office know. And who is the person now that's in charge of appointments? There's a new person, but, yeah. No.
Her name is Karen Brass.
Karen Brass, all right.
Brass, B-R-E-T-Z.
All right. Does staff have any reports?
Madam Chair, I was just looking at the calendar for the Assembly. That work session on the 14th is at 1:00 p.m., it looks like.
Oh, really? Okay. That was new. That's new. All right. Huh. All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else?
I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Adjournment? Commissioner Ferguson moved to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Robinson. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.